We'll call finance meeting to order. Just for the record, we will be flipping. The order, we're going to go in and do the consent agenda last, so. Presenters will go first out of respect for people's time. We're pretty likely consent agenda and we do hopefully go. Show up, also have a presentation from Kathy Bennett from BSNK. So. This is little, you are up and you have your, what's the name, I call it a clicker, but it's got a. It's a digital directional device.
Sounds like. We started our morning at Northeast today, it was thankful Thursday. So before I get started, I do want to say I am thankful to be here on behalf of the athletics department. And I'm gonna try to, I just go like this. Alright, awesome. So this slide just demonstrates hopefully to you. A little bit about community impact and. Oftentimes it's hard to necessarily get a feel and a sense for the community impact unless you're actually a part of it. So wanted to capture a little bit of it on the slides, just showing some of our scholar athletes. And really encourage folks to come and be a part of what we're doing. I know people get there when they can, but honestly, you just, you need to be there and feel it and see it and hear it. And it really is something that when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion. Our mission around that, I feel we're really able to hit some of those tenants due to the fact that it is such an inclusive welcoming environment. And it's bringing our entire community together regardless of. Race, class, sexual orientation. So I'm thankful for what the athletic. Community is able to provide for our scholar families and community in general. Looking here a little bit. These are some numbers that, you know, looking at them might not speak much to you. But speaks to the fact that our programs are maintaining, if not growing. We started unified basketball in two thousand seventeen. The next year we introduced unified bowling and then this year unified soccer. And last year we also introduced flag football. So even, you know, during the pandemic where you see those condensed seasons in twenty twenty one. And coming out of it, we've still been able to provide programming in support of our scholars. In a different type of.
What happened? Learning environment with that's a beautiful tennis court.
It is. Yeah, you know, it's some duplication of numbers across the board, it's about thirty scholars all winter, spring. So those numbers are accurate, but when you participate in a unified sport, you are able to participate in another. Diversity sport. So sometimes we'll have scholars who play lacrosse, but also participate in the unified basketball. Now to that beautiful tennis court, that beautiful baseball field and that beautiful pool.
Not a bad looking pool.
Not a bad looking pool at all.
Almost, almost.
And with these notable changes, I do just wanna, you know, note. That all scholars benefit and our community benefits. This is not just about scholar athletes, this is about our entire community, it is open for use. For for our community and for our staff. Not just the larger community, but also our community within, you know, in the city school district. And I also want to note that these changes are not possible without the love and support of our community, Dr. Brown and this board. We're fortunate to have a facilities department that is as passionate about aesthetics as I am.
I'm trying. Honestly, you're my style coach. I already know this, but like, those don't match, I got you.
Yeah, but I mean, the fact that, you know, Heather really moved quickly with this fence and it was a safety issue. And now that is up and we're ready to get the tennis courts back up and running. We start March thirteenth with spring sports. And we are a go and ready, so I'm grateful for the collaborations with facilities.
Hey Samantha, this is, this is Eldred. You don't have to answer it now. You can get at this at the end, but can, will you explain a little more to us about what you mean and you say? Our facilities are open to the public because I have gotten. Like the rest of us, I'm sure, I've got numerous questions from various members of our community that seem to feel. Otherwise, so can you just explain that to us before you end your presentation? Thanks.
Thank you for that and I will. In order to use the facilities, we use ML schedules. And with that process, you need to have insurance. So yes, it is open, but we also have to make sure that we're providing a layer of protection. For the community and for ourselves as the district. We widely publicize that. Thank you. On our e-sign, our new e-sign that we have in front of the building and it's on our website. And to give some examples of things that are open and when, like our weight room is open to staff. Elementary staff, as soon as they're done with school, they can come over and use it. It's open to, which we have to remember, our staff are also community members. So that's why I share that. And then we have another time from six to seven that our weight room is open and available. Things like the track, Heather just reminded me, look Samantha, you have that open every morning at six o'clock with the Finger Lakes Running Club. So as long as folks are using the proper channels and not just helping themselves to the spaces. They're more than welcome, but we do need to follow the process and procedures and sometimes facilities. That we're offering to the public have timeframes because our, our scholar athletes are using them. So it's not like it's cart launch and you can just use it whenever you want, but Boyton, DeWitt, LACS. We have those spaces, we've got men's basketball club leagues running it in the evening. Here at Q Gym and also at Boyton. So it's just using that process. Does that help Eldred?
Yeah, that helps, that helps a lot. I. I don't know where the confusion is, but I'll tell the next people I call, yeah, just check for times and have your insurance and.
Sign off.
It should be okay. Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Looking at this slide. It really just kind of speaks to the budget from year to year. We usually have to do about a five percent increase overall for our coaches. We are looking at making some adjustments in some of the. Positions, we're proposing some adjustments with some positions that we have in the department. So you see that arrow that's, you know, going down. That's really should be. A zero. So I apologize if that was not updated, that transitional coach piece, that is something that we, I think mid. Year, maybe December, that's something that we're. No longer using and that person really kind of served as a mentor. On boarded new coaches. Provided some professional development, we found some other ways to do that. So we are looking at phasing that role out and putting that towards another role in the department and we'll get to that in a moment. But the other stuff is relatively self-explanatory. We haven't done the sports study hall. In the magnitude that it's been done in the past, but we are trying to ensure that we are meeting scholars where they are because we don't want there to be any barriers for participation. So we have that at DeWitt, Boyton and at IHS, LACS scholars can join. At. Any of those locations depending on what teams that they're participating on. So it's, you know, inclusive to all of our scholars. This next one, site staff. It has, that number has gone up for a variety of reasons. The site staff pay hadn't increased in over ten years. And really to maintain the safety and sportspersonship, I say, of our home contests. We need to have, we're noticing that we need to have more. Typically, we would have two site staff and that would be enough. This year we've had anywhere from six to eight and seeking administrative support. Attendance is increasing at our events and. Again, we want to ensure the safety of our, of all of those, you know, attending. So we up the price from fifty to seventy five per game for our site staff. And it's really nice because you see a picture of Tulam being there. We are fortunate that we get a lot of our educational support providers that often do. The work and we're constantly seeking those who have relationships with scholars. Because that makes a difference when, you know, we're, we're seeking their support and being. And demonstrating sportspersonship. I will say that Jason Trumble has taken an active role with our red zone. We have a scholar athlete council, he meets with them regularly in collaboration with Stephanie Valetta. To just really talk about what the sportspersonship mean and how do we want, when people are coming into our community, how do we want them to feel, how do we want to treat them? So it's a learning process. Excuse me. Next one, I mentioned this before talking about the staff proposal as we move into the two thousand twenty three, twenty four. Academic year. This picture of what we're looking at. Currently, we have one administrative assistant. That's been for the past six years and we've had the coordinator of scholar wellness for the past five years. The coordinator of athletics and events would be a new request. In addition to mine and I'll show the breakdown, there is the breakdown of duties, you have access to that. I don't want to get into the, you know, nitty gritty of all of that, but basically it's no secret that over the last six years. We've not necessarily been able, we've had, it's been a rotating door, we've not been able to. Keep anybody in the office. And. Some people have taken other jobs and gotten promotions, other people have just said, it's too much work, I can't do it. It is much different than. A typical administrative assistant or working in an AP office or working at facilities or working. You know, in transportation, there is a lot that goes into the work for what has typically been the administrative assistant. So we're looking at that coordinator of athletic and events. As a position to kind of take on. A little bit more of the work and then have an administrative assistant to handle some of the, you know, smaller pieces of the job. Such as, you know, the day to day. Build building of programming, supporting the scholars, answering the phones. I can bring it up so you can. Okay, can I bring it up? I can't click on that, can I? Oh, alright, you guys could go through it, but I mean. I know that we have. A lot in the department, but I just want to say there's a lot that happens from the department from, you know, social emotional learning to their state requirements. We have more scholars that are refugee, that are transfer students, all of that stuff. Involves a lot more than what we have seen or had to do in the past. So that's some of the need for looking at a different type of position. Patrick Services. We have. The. Ice time, you know, there's always increases to ice time. So where you see the red or where there's increases or there's decreases, just to kind of highlight, otherwise it's pretty much just basic. Increases, but when the ice time, we, we have to look at not just Cass Park, but J M McDonald and. We're hoping to get back at Cornell and be able to use some time there. So. We're looking at making an increase there of fees just to stay current with what their expectations are and we want to provide the opportunities for our. Hockey scholars. So in order to do that, we've got to increase there. You the athletic trainer, that is going, that's currently, we don't have one, we're using substitutes and we're looking to hire someone. That's just, as you can see, an increase in hour from fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred. And that's to meet the needs. We also like to provide, it's not just nine through twelve, it's seven through twelve. So in order to meet some of the modified scholars needs, we also ask the trainer to do work on nutrition and support. Scholars in that way. So there's the reason for the increase of hours. Just because we want that person to take on some additional duties and supporting with the social emotional learning and health and well being, wealthy of our scholars. We no longer have police officers at our venues. So that's another reason for the need for, you know, more site staff and having administrative presence. So that zeroed out and then. The wrestling room. It was a one-time fee. So what we had to pay for this year, we won't have that moving forward for next year. Looking at our slides. We're fortunate, you know, the pandemic in many ways made all of us think about things differently. We had huddle prior to the pandemic and it was a good thing. But that does afford families who can't make the contests. Or, you know. People who aren't living in the area to make the contest and it also provides opportunities for our scholar athletes who are being recruited. We have this software called Huddle. There's a program that increases each year, it is both seasonable. So. You know, we are getting some return on that, which is, is nice, but there is an increase in that price. And then we have started, you'll see the increase where it says other. The food for our scholar athlete council, for family meetings that we have and the refueling station that we started. To ensure that scholar athletes, you know, whether they can go home or can't go home before practice, can get chocolate milk, they can get a protein bar or a shake. So that all is happening out of our athletic trainer office. So there's an increase a little bit in that. Equipment. This is something that Heather and I are working collaboratively with and while you'll see the two different. Numbers at the bottom, it really depends on, and look, it's all one budget, we realize that, but where it comes out of, you know, we have to designate. So depending on what we do. If facilities is incurring some of those costs, it goes, you know, down considerably, but the money still needs to be spent somewhere. So. That's what we're looking at, but there are things that are just outdated and need to be redone. And. The next slide will show some ways that we've looked at it in terms of a phasing it in year one, year two, year three. We recognize that things can't all be done at once, but there are things like scoreboards that need to be updated. Backstops for safety reasons. And that's what this next slide is, as I mentioned, year one, two and three. And year one is what we're looking for the twenty three, twenty four, year two and we're. Some of the, the situations are safety, the backstops, the baseball backstop. Is not regulated, Heather, we're working with Heather, the softball backstop is not regulated, we're looking into the regulations. And we, anything else that's notable, we need some volleyball standards. And I think that's it for, we are looking at getting the gym painted, it hasn't been painted in probably. Thirty years and there's some patches to the walls that need to be done and things of that nature. So that's what we'd be looking at for.
We won't do that in-house, we'll hire out for that.
We're talking about that. We're building capacity toward doing everything in-house. So I feel. I don't have an interview tonight. We're working on it.
And just some initiatives that we're looking at. We have our, our whole school wellness, social emotional programming. That can be used by health workers and P E educators. So that's, you see those three pillars. And we're looking at arbiter sports, it's called arbiter pay, it's an automated payment for officials, which will save about eight hours a week in processing. And officials will receive their money much quicker. Oftentimes we're hearing from officials that they haven't received their pay. Because as Emily and Sydney and Amanda, I mean, it's like, there's thirty steps just to pay one official. So we are looking at trying to work smarter, not harder and be more efficient. And we also are looking at. Getting some shelving and we're working with, in terms of initiatives and how we're trying to partner and do the work in-house and build that capacity, we're looking at some, some shelving. For storage, that seems to be an issue everywhere. So we're looking at ways to also. Store our items. So when we are purchasing them and spending money on them, that we are able to take care of them, be able to find them, be able to get them, know where they are. This one, yeah, I mean, twenty twenty three and beyond, we, you know, we've been fortunate to add flag football. We, more unified sports are offered, we'll continue to add those unified sports. We want to continue with our strength and conditioning programming, we want to collaborate with IC in Portland. And Cornell and, you know, we've got some apprenticeships and provided opportunities for. Scholars at the post-secondary level and also within our community to really figure out what some of their passions are by doing internships. Whether it be through summer youth employment or working in the weight room or working with our athletic trainer, working side by side with the coaches. So we want to continue to, you know, foster that, looking at, you know, our injury prevention and. Also looking at just continuing to, to build a culture of excellence within our programming. So there's a bunch of documents that's had. In regards to the budget and how it's all broken down, it gets very in-depth and detailed. Emily Smith is phenomenal. And really has a knack for. Creating forms and showing exactly where the work is and where the money's going and, and how that all works. I'm good. You're good.
Any questions?
Yes, so. You mentioned about no more police officers at venues and we have staff. Present instead. If there are a reason we had the police officers, we no longer need them.
I mean, I think that was like. Just something that had always been done and then we started to reexamine our practices and why. I, I can't say that it's. Was it helpful? May, maybe in some situations in the parking lot, once the game is let out. But you also have to remember, like I said, we have educational support providers. Serving as sites staff. So when issues do arise, that's why it's so critical for our administrator to be present to just support in those situations. But I can't say that we've had some type of incident that we needed to have the police there. But I think it's just always something that had happened in the past and we wanted to move away from that in terms of creating that culture of. You know, this is our community, not that the police officers are, they are a part of our community, but just in a different sense, because some scholars have different feelings around the police and their involvement. So.
I should have started out, first of all, saying thank you very much. Because not only for the presentation. For your continued commitment and dedication as you're juggling both. Like overseeing the athletics department and interim. Principal at Northeast Elementary. And that's why I, when I saw you at a basketball game recently, I had to ask, how are you? And I appreciate this breakdown, I'm looking at the breakdown because. I definitely think this is me there. I know when I'm voicing, I'm not on the committee, I'm a board member here, but um. Because you're actually right, twenty four hours, well. Twelve months out of the year, director of athletics and wellness, because I, as a parent, seeing all that you juggle. And like all of the students running up to you, when's the next game since we're making it to stacks and so forth. That this is overwhelmingly a lot. And when we talk about wellness, we always talk about wellness for our students and. We want to make sure our wellness for our staff too in every capacity. And that's so important because. A lot is here that needs to be redistributed. But thank you for continuing to organize the athletics department. Since you've gone into this position, I've definitely seen a transition and, and it's been great, it's been fantastic having you. And I'm, yeah, I like this breakdown. Yeah.
No, you can always, I appreciate that. You can always reach out with any questions outside of here too, because it's a lot of information and you all. Have a lot coming at you, but it is important that we're continuing to, as you said, foster that commitment to our scholars and our staff and our coaches. There's a lot more that could be being done for our coaches that's not because of time and where we're spending our energy and that innovation and programming. You know, we've got to be able to have the capacity mentally and physically to be able to do that and not be, stay stagnant or mediocre. You know, mediocre in what we're providing for our kids. So.
Thank you so much. And I am grateful for you and everything that you do in this.
I'm grateful to have the opportunity and it's not done alone, it's done with.
Yes.
You know. Partnerships with Heather and Dan and everybody. I mean, so I'm grateful for this district and for the leadership in this district and for the. That the core central we are about the kids and all kids, not just some. So I'm grateful. Amanda is. And Lily, I mean, I can't, you know, I'll get emotional. I had acupuncture before I came here.
I didn't want to get emotional, but I mean, I feel blessed.
It's all flowing, but I do feel blessed to be a part of this district and Northeast rocks. So we've got to be as principal ever.
Samantha, before you take off, can I just ask one question about the pool? Not to bring you down, but is the pool, is where are we at with the pool? I'm not on facilities, so I'm a little lost.
We are pointing with. There's a couple of things that we're pointing out, has nothing to do with the actual pool, but we are, we are good to go.
Oh, cool. So it's done.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, the pool's done. We're getting ready to put our plaque back up on the wall and do some more aesthetic stuff.
Couple things with the bleachers, I was like, that are like, we, we're, we're holding accountable the bleacher company to come back and fix it because it's not good enough.
Alright. Alright, go swimmers.
Yes, they are going.
Thanks.
Alright.
Alright. I'm Heather, it's okay Stan. I'm not gonna awkwardly run or I just call it waddle. I'm at a funny stage in life where I need glasses for clothes and I also can't see far away, so I'm really not sure where I'm going. So this is a little bit. Yeah, right here. So the beginning of this presentation, to be honest. This is mostly what I share with the facilities committee. So this is my first. This is my first introduction really to the finance committee. So this was from our summer. And it was just a fledgling start of our, our recognition to. Digging ourselves out of a bit of a hole. That the board and the district had made a commitment to go in a direction and, and my job is to. Is to make it comfortable, basically. That's what, that's what we're here for. And so some of this is just. I felt like Samantha had pictures, I should have some pictures. So I just left these pictures in, honestly. So we're taking a look at things like the pool, we're looking at the way that facilities workers, like I'm the story girl. That there was an ask to modify the furniture for students with disabilities. And we didn't want to have to have a student pick a particular seat because that's the one that the wheelchair founder. Because that's how I pick a roll. So our carpenter came in and modified all the furniture, not by lifting it up. But by modifying all the furniture in every room this kid's going to be in, so that anybody can sit anywhere. And like I said, seven months ago, our understanding was we want to support. What's happening educationally. But. We also want to enhance. Like we're seven months out, now we want to support, want to enhance. So it's everything for monitoring refrigerators. Blah de blah de blah, right? Big things happening, things are supposed to be looking better. Now I'll go to the text part. Because this is the finance part. So what we're trying to do is we are trying to collaborate and be thought partners. With a care and keeping of teaching and learning environments that will engage and educate and empower students. And it's expensive. And I want to share with you my background a little bit. That part of the, the view that I bring to this committee is based on twenty five years in the classroom and seeing when things go well and they don't. And also a fairly recent Harvard study. So I'm going to show you. The Newton volts and it's, it's linked in here, but it's also super boring and if you're like me, you might not click on all the links in the presentation. So here's what we have. We have that student success and the time they spend in school. Is directly tied to these nine foundations of healthy building. This from the Harvard study. Air quality, thermal health, moisture, duct, paths, safety and security, water quality, noise, lighting and views and ventilation. Those are not the big sexes and I get it. None of those things are very glamorous. But on their own. They can either have a positive or a negative effect on it, on our learners and our teachers. So. On average. For every increase in purified air, right? We're seeing between a two point seven and two point nine increase in student achievement on their MATH and ELA test. It's really hard to pinpoint. But if it's, if facilities don't have their act together. It impacts students, it impacts learning. And if we do have our act together and we're building capacity to that. It makes teaching and learning better, which isn't mentioned here, it's in the Harvard study, I brought it with me, it's linked. It's also really important. It's also really important to note that the twenty two, the twenty twenty two follow up to that. Um study noted that air quality and filtration doubled the cognitive performers of. Learners on in computational skills and reading. So for me, um my understanding is that. I'm not in the classroom anymore, but I am a little bit right now. Um everything I've learned. Points me in the direction that if facilities is a well-oiled machine, see what I did there? Students do better. Um it also has a positive impact in general. So here's a fun fact, thermal health, how hot, how cold, right? I'm sweating a little bit right now. Um. A recent study of seventy five thousand high school students. Found that for every increase of one degree. In indoor air and test in in testing situation. For every increase above the comfort zone of sixteen to seventy, every one degree increase scores fell by two cents one percent. Meaning the likelihood of failing an exam on a ninety degree day versus a seventy five degree day is twelve percent higher. So the little things aren't the little things. The little things are the big things. And they're kind of invisible, like air temperatures kind of invisible, you know, when it's hot. But if we can contribute to that. Then we should. Um. What have I done in the seven months? What we're doing is we're building a capacity to have a team. Of employees in facilities. Who understand all of what I've just shared with you and more. They understand that every single thing they do every day impacts a teaching and learning experience for a child. And it impacts their achievement as well. And as those, as uh my own staff is empowered and educated. To make that change, we're seeing big differences. Um so. Some of the the stuff, right? Here's some high impact expenditures. We already know what they are, cause we already have the numbers. I want to uh, we recently asked for an increase in the number of maintenance staff. We have ten. And then one is out of medical perhaps a year. So we were at nine um for a district with over a million square. So we recently added, and what I'm gonna ask for. I'm gonna ask for two more, maybe even three more, and here's why. We are a largely aged staff in maintenance. I've had five of our folks come to me since July and say, I'm retiring in three years. And when I added it up, they're taking over a hundred years of institutional knowledge with them. Everything from the creaky old boilers at Caroline where I went to school. To um in lines under the water or things that happened in nineteen seventy eight. And what I want, what I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna ask for three new positions for. Two to three years, so that the people who are leaving. Can keep our, teach our new folks everything they know and more, because there are the sudden urgency in my department. To make sure that our babies are taken care of. Because they understand now that we are taking care of the babies too. So one of the high impact expenditures I'm gonna ask for is a temporary flex um in increase in maintenance staff. It is temporary, meaning that when folks start to retire, I'm not gonna ask you to backfill. Um. Some other things that we're gonna do, we're teaming with technology to build capacity for district wa- district wide. Safety systems to monitor. So we've been practicing by monitoring our air quality and our temperature. I've been talking to Zach and Peter, you'll hear from them in technology. We wanna add in our um. All of our systems. We wanna make sure that twenty four seven, our um servers are monitored, our cameras are monitored. So that's an ask and this is a shared ask here. So everything I do, I want it to be. Systemic, sustainable and scalable. Because that is efficiency. So these are high impact expenditures right up front. But they're not forever and pretty soon they're gonna save. So an efficient staff. Means we're spending less money. Lack of redundancy and effort. We're partnering with unions. We're using grant funds um to do some workforce training. I don't need a grounds coordinator. I needed uh. I I share with Samantha, right? I needed a head building maintenance mechanic and you gave me one in January and it is life changing. So I don't necessarily need this. But I'm with you because once you have somebody else who understands the game. Shouldering along with you. Big things happen. Here's, here's a big thing that happened for us last week. This one on my field. Sorry, still no pictures. Um. I'll come back to it. We had an eating event. Water event, freezing event, whatever it was. Uh we referenced one for our um. Our facilities committee last hour. There was an event at South Hill that directed education. The cleanup and response to that event tops twenty thousand dollars. That's, that's on the street or so. I'm like, hmm, that is a big amount, right? We had the same thing happen in our own building last weekend, right here. Underground. And the first thing was to call a cleanup, call this, and my, my guy said, I got this. Now, keep in mind, four of them were up in Syracuse for a training. Our whole HVAC team is up for a training. We had one guy who already had the training and we hadn't electrician. I had some other folks out. They isolated a twenty one foot section of steel pipe that had rotted apart underground and gone bad. They made a plan, they executed it, they communicated. There was no interruption in instruction. It was a little chilly here in the board building for a few hours, right? And then what it costs to clean that up and do it ourselves is just over eleven hundred dollars. Right? So right there, we're efficient. That's close to, all right. A month ago, it was a twenty thousand dollar cleanup for a similar problem. We did it for eleven hundred dollars. Because we are building our own capacity. So when I say we're gonna have some expenses, they are upfront expenses to build capacity and then. It's not gonna be needed anymore. And we're gonna cost you a little bit less money. So one of the ways we're doing that is that our custodial. Support. So we're cleaning, we have uh, there's no such thing as half a, half a person. We should have fifty, about fifty seven people cleaning a million square feet. We'll put a pin in that, come back to it another day. Our ground support. Um the ask, I think, was for seventeen and I said, I don't need it because we are becoming a lean mean machine. I wanna keep twelve. I don't need those extra five. I don't need those five, but I need three more here. It's, it's basically a net, it's a net zero, right? Because we are becoming efficient and the level of teamwork is unprecedented. So there's the save there. Some of the boring stuff, uh we need some equipment, but absolute stallers, right? People who are living by. Here's a fun fact about facilities. We don't own any lockout or tagout. That means like if somebody goes wrong electively, electrically, you're supposed to put a lock on it and tag it so nobody touches it. Every single one of my maintenance staff should have a kit in their van and there should be one in buildings. We don't have it in our premises. Which is fine, right? Because that's a okay baseline to build on, because it's not gonna stay that way. But in order for us to to reach ocean compliance and have our students and staff and our kids feel safe, we need a few things. This is what we need. Utilities, hmm, probably gonna go up. I don't know. No crystal ball. So just in case. I did ask for more money there and I don't know about that. Um filtration, we've committed to an an ongoing. Uh expense there in terms of uh air filter. I've already told you how I feel about the importance of filtration, just from a test floor standpoint, from a. Human health. So there's a little bit of an increase there. Over time, we'll save you money. We will save you money as we build capacity. Um. Some numbers wise things, contractual maintenance supplies, these are relatively unchanged. Year to year. It's about the same contractor. You have to have your elevators inspected. You gotta do your fire stuff, like. Okay, you gotta do it. Um. Here's, what we're looking at is some anticipated efficiencies. That we are being strategic about our staffing, strategic about. Um how we're using the people that we have and we're already working together and. Uh and by we, I mean not me. I'm in a room with a bunch of people and I uh I heard a a leadership little tidbit. I don't know if you heard this. Gotta tick that. Uh there's a, there's a leader that advocated, um when you start a meeting, you should ask for the blueberries. And I was like, that's fantastic. Um and what he meant by that is back in the time when people uh like were doing hunting and gathering. You didn't start a meeting by telling everybody what they did wrong. My folks already know what's not going well. They can see it there themselves. We can all see it, right? When you see something dirty or something that's broken. Everyone can spot it. This leader said, ask about the blueberries. What they, what he meant is when you find someone who's been successful, you're back at hunter gatherer times. And somebody's got some blueberries. You don't talk to them about how they look. You say. You want the whole group to be successful, so you ask, how'd you find them? What was your strategy? How did they grow? What can we do to replicate this? So. My leadership style for facilities is asking my team for the blueberries. And when I do that. They are fixing what could have been done a long time ago because they've been asked and they're empowered to do that. And we're gonna save you money, but not this year. Um I'm gonna save you a little bit. Uh so here's one thing, a signal inventory reduction team has not been done and I'm gonna ask you for that. Uh we are, and indeed, how many inverters do we have? And a ballpark could be forty something. We have about forty something inverters. Here's another fun fact. According to the state law, they are considered a building. Which means by law now, they all have to have push bar hardware installed in that, in the ones that we own. That's a fun fact. It runs between three and seven thousand dollars each. To do that. And I was like, well, that's ridiculous. That's like ninety thousand dollars. For like fifty. We can clean them all out. And we can talk to people about repurposing them, making them into tiny homes, working with community groups, working with um Black Hands Universal. Working with other people to see what we can do. And to get rid of some of our inventory, we have to sort of break that, uh I think city, school, district. Uh pattern of um porting and when something has reached the end of its useful life. We gotta let it go. Um but I'm gonna be honest with you, we have a lot to let go and it all sits up at the end. And I would like, uh I, this is uh, this is a big ask. But it is, it's cost neutral. I'm asking you to give me people, we already have a plan. We already, we already have it. We've tried it. We know exactly what to do. We have it scheduled. We need that to clean it out. Once we clean it out, we can do things like support our scholars. With athletic storage and support our pre-K. We deserve a place to have all the things that they need in our special ed. And our nurses and our goal. We need to better utilize the space that we have. So those are my big asks. And I didn't put any numbers on them, partly because I don't know all the numbers. Um Sydney and Emily know all the numbers and Amanda knows all the numbers. Um. And and I think this concludes. My presentation. Um if you have specific questions, um I hope I'm, I hope we can answer them tonight.
So one thing, you're gonna save us money, not you. Rough numbers, last year versus this year, percent dollar wide increase year over year would be looking at.
What are we looking at, Sydney? No, I'm gonna punt that. Um to be honest, for seven months, I have not had um. Well, let me put this way, in the last month, I've gotten a lot accomplished because I have. That head building maintenance mechanic. I have that that support piece that I needed. And some of these details I do not have ready, so I'm gonna just rely on Sydney to make me look better than I am.
No, you're doing great. Um second question. If. Head count. Putting the right people in the right places, what kind of, what do you need? And what did that ship look like?
I have the right people. I don't need um. That, that's been fantastic. The, it just, January board meeting. You put three of the people I already had in the places that I needed them to be and I thank you for that. Um Sean Ward moved from um. Maintenance to be head building maintenance mechanic, which means that he's my right hand number two. Really, he's number one. We already had Sean, moved him. Don, Marissa and Travis were on grounds. Their talent is fantastic. They moved to maintenance. Um we are losing uh an absolute treasure in Tim Malone. His, his institutional knowledge. He, 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 he's done in June, but he's, he's taking some time to heal, uh you know, from some stuff that he had going on. So we've got that spot. What I really need is I need to hire two or three more maintenance folks. Um and then we'll. That will shrink the grounds to about what we need. Um. This all comes together a little bit better. Also, this isn't my department, but if we can throw a. A food courier in, someone, uh I basically have two groundskeepers. In a truck and two in another truck and they show up at food service every day from seven to eleven. They drive food all over the district. They're groundskeepers and I think that it would be a better use of their time and energy to take care of our grounds. Um it would also allow us a greater focus on our athletic facilities and maintaining them. Um and in a way that supports our scholars and athletes. So um I I don't know where that phantom position is coming from. I'm just gonna look away. But um that would actually help us tremendously. Um. That's it. Uh we have, we have great hearts and minds, so we staff.
So I'm not even hearing like, so three people, basically, and then transitioning that food courier to. Food services possibly?
Possibly. I, I don't know the ins and outs of that. I probably spoke out of turn doing that.
This is how things, this.
What, what I need, yeah, what I need is to not deliver food. Because that's, that's. Four, four people, five hours a day. That's twenty hours that I'm paying people to take care of. Of babies and we're taking care of babies in a different sense, in a food sense. Yeah. So the way we manage that, right? And you know, you put a budget number with that position. The glory of the budget, Karen and I were talking like budget one oh one, right? It's like a moment in time study. So what this would look like is a pennies holder, right? It, it doesn't matter actually where it's coded at the moment, cause it would move. If we needed it to, if it went to a different department, but the whole point is to have that placeholder, right, to incorporate whatever that salary would be into the budget. Right? So Sam, same thing, when Sam is questioning about what that department might look like, you wanna make sure that you place hold the money. In that, what, what do you believe the salary and benefits will be? And then the logistics of getting there, the civil service, the working with the unions, the working with the department heads, the, right, like, uh, do we have to create a new title, job title? Those things can all happen, right? And those, that's just part of the work that we do. We wanna make sure that the budget captures the monetary requests. Right? And that's why we have to really educate our community, cause so often when we go out with a budget, that's a proposal of that moment in time. But the work evolves it and maybe you land in the next budget year in a different manner. And so you wanna. That's why we always try to put those notes in the budget of just like, remember we were talking about this, this is what it looked like in February. And now it is, you know, the next year and we evolved to this place. The money is similar. The way we, where it landed in the departments is different.
Cause often year over year, you'll see an increase and will wonder where that increase. Cause it'll be a large dollar amount and it would look like we're adding.
Right. And so another point too that Heather made, right? So Heather has staff who have announced retirements or close to retirements, right? That's another piece in the budget that oftentimes when people look at the budget, not knowing and living it every year, right? They see that there are decreases in line items and they say you cut positions. And the reality is that when we hire staff that don't have all those years of service, they come in at a different salary level. Than the folks that left the operations. And so you see decreases a lot of times in budget lines. Not because we've eliminated or cut positions, but because people are living a beautiful life in retirement. With their New York State Retirement System and we've hired and replaced them per the bargain agreement. At a salary schedule based on their years of experience, which is less than the first.
Breakage, yeah.
Yeah, that's called breakage. Exactly. The breakage in my department in the next five years is. Projected. It's pretty significant.
Looking at the average tenure, you have to be twenty years minimum?
Oh, my goodness.
I said minimum.
There, there are. Really dedicated. Thirty three years or twenty years. Uh we've got a, a recent letter, uh just this week from someone.
So and this is where we um look into like, we talk about grow your own and. And we inclusion leadership council for teachers, but yet for. And we inclusion leadership council for teachers, but yet for facilities and. Knowing that we have BOSEs nearby where quite a few students come out with certification, have we ever looked into that too? And knowing that in the next few weeks, um, the high school students go into eleventh grade, we'll have a time where they do a BOSE tour. Like, start to do some projections, like, once you go through this program. Here it is, if you're looking to work in the school district or nearby, since this is a CBOC bill.
I'm glad that you brought that up, um, I spent some time at, um. At BOSEs this week, working with Cindy Walter and CTE program. Uh, we're looking to partner, about four years ago, I got connected with um, all nineteen representatives of trade unions. And we've been working over the course of four years. And um, a recent connection that our own Margie Shaw is working on with um. With Challenge Industry and some partners, what we're really looking to do is exactly that, we're looking for a legacy workforce that, um. I think Emerson Kaiser, this might be way out of turn. Oh wow, I, I already took the step, um, I, 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 we are gonna be looking to. Uh, explore a partnership between, um. Students and facilities department, cautiously saying this. Um, a program that would be um, supporting academics and basic soft skills and some actual job training. So we have, uh, fingers in a whole bunch of different pots. With that all in mind, I'm hoping it can be sooner rather than later. There's nothing I would rather hear than someone saying, like Sean Ward. I went to school here and I went to work here and now I'm leaving here, that feels great.
I need for the athletics department, BOSEs have an excellent exercise science. And I cannot get into link on here, so I guess. There's an error message, oh.
I'll see if I can clean that up, I apologize.
I think we can have an answer on that, um. Not including, you know, the, the staffing, because that, that's messing, is we're looking to maybe. You know, cut some positions, maybe add some, so setting that aside, just looking at fuel, natural gas and electric and, um. Just the regular materials and supplies and contractual spending, an increase of about two hundred and thirty thousand. Um, and that's about seven percent. We've got a pretty big increase that we're looking at, probably in the um, fuel and natural gas, unfortunately.
My last question, um, the fifty-two thousand, where you said equipment, was that to get? There was something about getting rid of equipment or?
There were, there were two, so there was the fifty-two. Thousand was in, so the, under like salter's field equipment. Bobcat, that, and then there was a similar, um.
But you're make room for storage and.
That's, that's the two, I got you, so, um. I, I forgot the question.
We um, have trailers that we rented, they also work as well. Um, due to the fact that they've been hours for so long, they're just beyond the rental life. Um, and we utilize those as temporary storage. Could really accommodate all of the needs for um, the six feet spacing in classrooms, that, the, a lot of the. Um, things that we had, right, fan wouldn't work, fan running, work. Hours on getting the classrooms ready, coming off of COVID with the architect. Um, and, and measuring and remeasuring, so a lot of that is in those trailers, that's what Cindy was referring to. And there's also things pre-COVID, it just tends to be sort of the landing zone. Um, including storage areas in buildings, of landing zone of things that we just don't want to say goodbye to. So we're gonna try, I wish, it's like, it's before Marie condo became apparent, we're gonna do that. Uh, which is thank you and let it go, right?
There's an equipment request, which is different than cleaning up the trail.
That's correct.
Pretty cleaning up trailers, the seasonal, uh, workers that, uh, that are referred to. So they're different, both are great ideas.
And, and we can bring in revenue with scrap metals, if they were, so a lot of those things, so that. But those things actually do have a value, um, so that does bring in a revenue. Just like our old vehicles, when we trade those in, those, and had our, that's the other thing that's not included there. Um, there's replacement cycles also for the vehicles that help the department, the facilities department, so both grounds. And maintenance on those vehicles, a number of years ago, we put that into the budget. And we keep growing that a little bit as vehicle prices go up each year, um, try to replace those vehicles each year.
That's, I'll just pop that in, cause here we are. Um, that's another one of the efficiencies that the, that the team came up with, and we're talking about blueberries, right? They said, um, it doesn't make sense to have one trough, trailer haul. A whole bunch of mowers, the one school dropped two of them off and then wait there all day. And there's only one person with a CDL that can even haul the trailer. So, they asked us, and we just recently purchased, um, a crew cab truck, so that four people can be in it. A smaller trailer, which we used, uh, in support of athletics, a dump trailer. And it fits two mowers in it along with gas can, so their idea was four people should show up on a campus. And use hedge trimmers, whoppers, heater, all at once on the exact same day. And then keep it that way, and then haul off any yard waste in said trailer. So, um, I just had to be smart enough to listen to the people who were doing the work and knew what works down. So, that type of efficiency is gonna show up in, in various equipment lines also.
Well, I'm just gonna break down utilities a little bit, I just wanna say that lake source cooling for us is flat, bad cost. Water is around three or four percent, uh, electricity, we're gauging, we're guessing it's gonna be about seven percent. And the natural gas, which is bigger, increased, that's, we're projecting twenty-five. Is the answer here, well, I just wanted to break down your utility question to understand the, the increase, the, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I love budgets and finance, could I just say, really, so, next, next month, we got a special ed and we got technology. I mean, it's like, it's so great, thank you, thank you.
Do we have Kathy? All right, so we'll pull up Kathy.
You should be able to unmute, I think, and, and be ready to go. While Kathy, uh, while we, while we find Kathy, um.
I, 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 I'm, I'm here, sorry.
So, you have a hard stop, right, and, oh, like seven twenty?
Um, I can go until about seven twenty-five and then I need to run into my meeting. I, I drove to my meeting location so I could sit in the parking lot and do this call and, and be able to be on until about seven twenty-five.
Let's hope it's not that long, this is the topic, although exciting for many, I'm sure, it's exemptions, the max exemptions. And the reason why I asked Kathy to come today, because if you remember the finance committee, we had someone from David, David Webb, who came in from D M D. About an exemption for, um, some developers that, uh, that were actually providing development, I think would be. And then we also have an email, um, from, um, some seniors about, uh. Increasing the threshold for their exemption in terms of their income eligibility. And I wanted the board to just get a very brief, very, very brief exemption. What is it, when people ask for those, what does it mean to all the other taxpayers? And that is sort of the consideration that the board would really be thinking about. We as a board in the past, and I'm not, we, I'm not on the board, but I know that when these have come to the board, uh, in the past. There has been a real analysis about granting them, and in fact, we haven't granted a lot of them. Cause Kathy, as we'll explain, there is an income to other taxpayers that don't qualify for exemptions. So Kathy, go ahead, I'm gonna now mute myself here in the room.
Uh, sure, so hello everyone, I'm gonna stay off screen just because I'm on my phone and in my car. Um, but happy I could get on tonight and just talk briefly about some of, you know, these exemption issues with you. So what I've been seeing a lot of recently. Uh, with respect to these types of exemptions are, you know, requests to come in for the senior exemption. Because New York State has just increased the limits available, uh, for seniors, uh, to apply for that exemption. What I've seen in, in that regard is that even though you can go up to fifty-eight thousand. Uh, four hundred dollars as the maximum income for a senior to obtain a five percent exemption. And then you can go up to fifty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars for a senior to obtain a twenty percent exemption. It's been my experience that most taxing jurisdictions who are increasing. Uh, the income limit are not going to that maximum limit yet. And that is in part because it is hard to gauge what the impact of increasing those income limits. Will be, so I think the thought process is most of them, you know, are, are going to do small steps. Uh, so that they can get a better sense of, of what the income will be on other taxpayers. And the reason for that, it's because it's really hard to know how many, you know, people within your jurisdiction would fall within those income limits. Um, and, you know, that, that's pretty much the same with, with two of the other. You know, non-mandatory sort of more personal individual exemptions. And those are, you know, the, the new exemption that the state has passed for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Who reside within your district, um, and also the veterans, the various veterans exemptions that are available. For, you know, those individuals who have served during wars. Uh, can also apply for, you know, limited exemptions on their assessments. Um, so these aren't full exemptions, they're all partial exemptions, as I said, the senior exemption ra- ranges. You know, from five to twenty percent. Um, the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers exemption is ten percent. Um, the veterans exemption is a minimum of fifteen percent. Uh, there's an additional ten percent for veterans who serve in a combat zone. And there's additional benefits available if the veteran was disabled. So, you know, they're not total exemptions, they're all partial exemptions. But it is sort of hard to gauge what the potential impact is of granting these exemptions. Uh, again, because it's hard to know the number of people that are eligible to apply within your district and that will apply within your district. But it is true that every time you grant an exemption. Your tax burden, tax levy, right, gets redistributed. To other real property owners within the district, so it means that those others will inevitably end up paying. A larger share. Um, you know, of the real property tax burden. Uh, and then, you know, I think Amanda mentioned the, you know. Business tax exemption, new construction tax exemption. So, so that typically, you know, comes up when an entity's doing, you know, a development or a redevelopment project. Uh, they go to generally the industrial development agency in the area to seek this exemption. Uh, you know, they enter into a pilot that then requires them to pay, you know, some percentage of taxes. And, and that's usually a step down exemption, so a lot of times the way those exemptions for new development work. Is that the amount, right, that the assessment increases based on. You know, the development, right, so if, if the property was assessed at, let's just say a thousand dollars before any improvements were made. And then the work on the property results in the assessment being increased. By another thousand dollars, then the exemption would apply to that increase in assessed value. The base value would always be the base value. Uh, and then the way it works is that generally you can get a hundred percent exemption in the first year. Uh, and then it sort of steps down five percent, you know, over the next ten to fifteen years. Is, is how those business exemptions, uh, work. So, you know, if, if anyone has any questions, if you want any more, you know, information on, you know. Potential impact ways, you know, to possibly measure that, you know, I'm happy to, you know, quickly answer any questions in that regard.
I will add just locally, Tompkins, so, um, I reached out to Jay Franklin as well. Um, specifically about the, uh, tax exemption for low income disabled seniors, right? And so the county, uh, aligned itself with, um. Uh, let's see here, they went from twenty-five thousand dollars, which is what most everybody had, and they increased it by ten thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand. Uh, and Jay did do a, a brief impact report for us, again though, it is. Absolutely an estimation, right, of like what that would, what that, uh, might mean. And so I can share that with the larger board, if this is something we wanna entertain. If we wanted to do that and raise it to thirty-five thousand, Kathy, that would take a board resolution solely, is that correct? And you do have to refer that in town hall along with that?
So you would have to have a public hearing, uh, prior to adopting the board resolution, but it, all, all it would take is a board resolution. But it has to be preceded by a public hearing.
Okay, so we wanted to look into that, um, request for that particular exemption for disabled seniors. And aligned with the county, we would do that, the public hearing, and then we would have the resolution at a later date.
So that's, um, for the low income disabled seniors, what about the other exemption that Kathy was mentioning, that up to like fifty-eight thousand?
That, that is the one Kathy, right, that had the two different thresholds, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so that's just, you know, the, the senior exemption, anybody who's at least sixty-five years old. Um, you know, can qualify or you, you can, you know. Decide you're going to grant an exemption and the income limits on that have been increased. Um, you know, so that i- if you wanted to go to the maximum, you know. Amount of income, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars would be entitled to a five percent exemption on their assessment. Fifty-seven thousand, five hundred for a ten percent exemption, or fifty-five thousand, seven hundred for a twenty percent exemption.
Kathy, do you have a sense what, what if, when Tompkins County went to the thirty-five thousand dollar threshold? Do you have a sense, is, is there a percentage exemption that goes along with that? That might be something you don't have in front of you, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, uh, they did do, so they even have, uh, they've done sort of an even wider range and, and, yeah, I apologize. I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get that to you, but yes, they've gone to thirty-five thousand and it is sort of, you know. A step up, so the lower your income, the higher the percentage of exemption you would get.
Okay.
So it would be good to know like population wise.
And, and it's gonna change year over year.
Yeah.
So according to Jay, if we went to the thirty-five thousand dollar threshold that he has on file. And again, this is like, it's not, right, it's very difficult to assess this. He believes that the tax rate would increase to others by about four or five cents. Uh, so about four cents here, and then that, so a medium, median home, and I'm not sure in Tompkins County. What the median home rate is anymore, um, and I have to look that up and I apologize, I should have probed that. But he's saying it's about. If we were to just go from a ten million dollar increase from twenty-five to thirty-five and align with the county, that's an estimate.
Something to bring to the entire board and have further discussion on.
Sure, yeah, so I what, I thought this was a good, but again, a response to David Webb, response to some of the requests. Maybe, um, you know, we could, uh, Kathy, I know you're willing to come to other meetings with us. Um, and Jay have offered as well, it's just a, you know, we'll just have to pull him, he's pretty busy, but we can definitely make this happen. If we wanna talk about.
Any timeframe that would be?
Kathy, sort of timeframe for this?
Um, so generally it depends on what the assessment calendar, calendar is for the municipality. That establishes the assessment role that you rely on. Um, so, you know, to the extent your school district boundaries um aren't coterminous with the city of Ithaca, you know, you'd have to consider each of, you know, the municipalities within which your district is located. For most towns, it's March first uh for someone to apply for such an application. I'm not sure what the city of Ithaca's assessment calendar is. They, most cities, I think, run on um, you know, a a January timetable, but I'm not sure that the city of Ithaca does. So I would need to look that up and I can get back to you on that. But but obviously, keep in mind, I mean, if, you know, your your district boundaries are in a town, you know, that happens to have a March first deadline, well, that just means somebody's not gonna get, you know, an exemption for their twenty twenty three, twenty four school taxes, right? You can still adopt it and then they could apply for it the following year.
Great.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, no problem. If you have any other questions or, you know, again, if you'd like me to attend any future meetings, uh need any resolutions, please just let me know. I'm happy to help in any way I can.
Great, thanks Kathy.
All right, thank you. Take care, everybody.
Bye bye.
I think you can kind of compile a one pager.
Yeah.
Sure.
With a chart.
Yeah.
And again, you can do any of those things, but we can absolutely do that for you.
We're correcting the fact that this is an estimation.
Yeah.
You know, it's done, but.
Yeah, I know, but I think David wasn't eager to engage further. Um, you know, and I think this is the venue to do it versus the full board at this moment in time, because I think we're still in the learning phase.
Eight percent in November?
Eight percent a couple months ago.
November sticks in my head.
So we've been doing, we do like the business write-off, but that seems a lot.
Higher. And they're going at those business write-offs that you were speaking on?
Yeah, I don't. The new construction.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh and we don't, we don't have any control over what is granted in the county and um those those are, you know, they're they're good because they bring in.
They bring in construction and development.
Right, and people live here and work here. And also, um, we have to consider them because they definitely can't have us right at the full amount, so. Our pilots, we should announce this too.
We could, yeah. People change.
Yeah.
Up and and do a dance to have an idea of where we're going.
It's a great thing to do every year.
Yeah, it's nice people that have been updated.
Thank you.
Right. So, uh, bring work. What we know so far is day-to-day tax cap.
I'm gonna do revenue and expenditure together and especially what I was gonna present at the board on Tuesday. And I will, I see it's all seven thirty, um and so I will be thorough and brief. Hopefully this saved you money, right? So respectful time. Um, sir, thank you, Shrek, yeah. So I will, I always include the budget calendar, right? Um, so everybody just remember, each time I come to you, this is sort of our goal, meetings get canceled, meetings get shifted, right? Um, so we will, we try to modify this and keep this up to date as we go, but it's sort of our guidance document. And then there's a lot of other elements on here that Trish and I need to know about that are meeting-based, right? We've gotta advertise in newspapers and we've gotta get things out and we've gotta uh go into portals and submit our data and all that stuff. This will be keeping us sort of keeping track, but it's always a nice thing to show the community um sort of where we're at. And it and it is, it's a, it feels um like it's, you're gonna see me a lot during budget season. Um, and there's an intensity to it, but also we get to bring in our budget makers as well, which we started doing many years ago. And that is like, I think one of the, again, the best things that we can do to hear it from them. So, um, you know, Karen and I were talking and it's like, you know, sometimes we want to remind the community almost like a budget one-on-one, like, what is this? And I mentioned this earlier in the meeting, right? You hopefully it's representing who you are as a district, right? And also what the community is willing to fund. Specifically in Ithaca, when state aid is a very small portion of our budget and the taxpayer, the tax base that levy is really the major source of revenue. So you want to be sure that you're getting feedback from the community to say, these are our needs, values and priorities. Do you agree with that and do you want to fund it, right? Because those things should be go hand in hand, right? It's also, there are many things in the budget that continue to be pushed forward because we've always done them. And that may be a wonderful thing. And that may be something that we just haven't taken the time to evaluate if it's something we want to continue. So the budget, we we look at that and we honor that and say, yeah, sometimes there's more work to be done on some of these budget lines. It's our present, what we're doing right now, and hopefully it captures everything future. Because once a budget is passed, there's still thinking happening. We're still in budget season, right? And so we hope it capture everything, but things evolve in this region, so we know that we want to try to capture everything moving forward as well. And then also, it is the estimation. It is not an, it is not your expenditure report. It is an estimation of what you think your expenditure report is going to be, right? So you try again to build that budget and we, I absolutely am very transparent that we build in capacity to move and grow and innovate. And there are areas of the budget that we will owe additional funds to, even if it's like, you know, we don't have yet to be determined what exactly that is, is that is, that is in sort of the development phase. So we put that in there. And it's also, we know that certain areas in the budget, like facilities and special education, there are unanticipated costs. We just know that happens every year and we build in for that. We build in questions in those, in those areas of the budget. I put in some information about the fiscal years as well as sort of what the voters, you know, when what what that looks like for approval and and how that works across the state. Um, school districts minus the big five all work simultaneously on the same day with pretty much the same process. Okay, the revenue to date. So I say I always put a date on the revenue because even though tax cap, I think I've got it absolutely solid, sometimes we miss a pilot. Sometimes I meet with fiscal advisors and they say, oh wait, you got this one payment that's coming, oh, you're getting aid on this. So the the tax cap to date right now is just under, even though it's considered to be a two percent. That's one element of the formula is two percent, right? Tax caps can go over two percent, they can go under two percent, they can actually be negative, right? You can actually, from year to year, and there are factors that lead to this, growth factors, tax base factors, your debt service payments, and then your aid, your capital aid that you're getting, your building aid. So just because the property tax cap, we're gonna be bringing in a lot of this money. Some of that is because our debt service is going up. So we've essentially spent into that three point nine million increase because our debt service is going up, right? And I'm gonna talk about some of the other budget drivers already that I know we can commit that three point nine million increase to. All right, so right now, that's where it's lingering. So what that means is, is that if we go out to the voters at the tax cap and increase our tax levy to one hundred and seven million, right? That means that we require um just a simple majority vote to pass that. If we go above that number, which again may change a bit, but we think this is pretty close. If we go above our tax cap number, it would require a super majority, meaning you need more than sixty percent of the vote to pass, okay? That levy is divided amongst all the taxpayers, as Kathy already explained, right? Once we know what the total assessed value is to the community, that levy then is divided by that total assessed value and that's how we get the tax rate. Chris and I for many years have said, what would be the levy if we held the rate firm? What is the levy with the tax cap? And we always do a comparative of that. Jay won't have those numbers yet, but I do come back to you and say, you know, if we held the rate flat, do we bring in more revenue by doing that? That's what we did last year. We held the rate flat, which is the levy divided by the total assessed value. So to me, this is very good news for bringing in more revenue from our major source of funding. As you can see there, one hundred and seven million from our ta- our tax base and then compared to thirty six or thirty seven million from our state aid. The state aid, this is right now what we got from the first round of governor's runs, aid runs. That is based on the data that we submit to uh through our portal, our our SAM's portal. At the end of the year, we do estimations of what we think um all of our, you know, our our pupil population will be and what our capital project work is and our BOSI's expenses. And that is all calculated at the state level. They split it back to us with, okay, Ithaca, you're rather wealthy. And therefore, when you spend X amount of dollars, you're gonna get this much back, okay? And so foundation aid is a formula that's really about your wealth factor, how wealthy you are in the district. Or how poor you are in the district, and then also your population and many other factors. We actually got a quite a large increase in our foundation aid this year, and that was Governor Hochul's um commitment to school districts. I think she's been really talking about fully funding that foundation aid. If you remember, the, over the years that we've all been working on this, Karen as a committee member, many capacities, Chris as a board member, that was the aid that was always sort of dangled or pulled or relieved, reduced or uh reassessed or um tapped into to make the budget whole for New York State and other places. So this foundation aid is bringing, is is fully funded for us this year. Building aid is based on capital projects that have happened over the past fifteen years, right? So building aid rolls on a fifteen-year sort of over, you know, you do a project and then the next fifteen years when you submit all your documents that rolls forward. So this is building aid that we're seeing from projects many, many years ago, right? Um, and so we always are working on that. You'll see subtle shifts mainly because we also tie it up within the debt service and when we're submitting um our paperwork for this current capital project. BOSI's aid is a reimbursement aid. What you spend, you get some money back on it. Um, our aid ratios are about in the fifties, right, fifty eight uh, what's the name?
Lower fifties, yeah.
Lower fifties for that. Um, transportation aid again is a reimbursement aid. You spend money and you get money back, again, lingering around that fifty percent. We can give you those ratios at another time. Public and private access cost aid is our um special education placements that um exceed a threshold set by the state, right? Because of the amount of services and the cost of those services that those students need to thrive. Software, library and textbook aid is also reimbursed and it's based on um, it's a designation based on your population. And then hardware and technology aid is the same thing. Those are, you know, they don't move the needle very much. Right now, at this moment in time, this is what we believe we know to be our aid ratios. I anticipate that BOSI's aid will go down. We usually analyze that very heavily because the BOSI's aid, remember, we do get a rebate on things that we put into our BOSI's budget that we don't spend. And that is included sometimes in the estimation for the aids and you have to back that out. So that BOSI's aid may go down as well, so we just want to make sure. There will also be a second iteration of aid runs from the governor in April. And that leads to a change in these numbers as well as we tighten up um our estimations, okay? So all in all, I mean, you know, almost four million at the top there, almost three million at the bottom there. And so, okay, well, what do we actually know about expenditures? Is that really good news? Or when we turn the calendar over due to our bargain agreement commitments and salary and benefits, um Heather and um Samantha just presented, Heather, I think, asked for a two hundred and thirty minus staff, maybe increase, hundred thirty thousand dollar increase. Samantha asked for a three hundred fifty thousand dollar increase, right? I know there's other factors, but I, there, this this will eat into it. So I have a slide for that and um and I'll just sort of track this a bit. So just remember sort of that the four million plus three million is about seven million uh turning from one to the other. Because this is sort of a budget one-on-one, we're gonna be putting this on a slide deck every single time, right? Remember I said a budget is representation of our values, who we are, what what we want to be, strive to be and what we are right now. And these have been the things that really have been our priorities. Um, those first uh six boxes, we've been using those every single year. We have not changed. We believe in our small neighborhood schools, we believe in extracurriculars, we believe in sons and adults, we believe in safe and healthy buildings, right? These are our things that we believe in. And then these are the learning forward goals. I wanted to include those as well. Those are, right? We've we've adopted those as our, we, those are our principles, who we are as a school district. So I'm gonna be showing these and when we do our budget, our official budget budget presentation, if you remember, every one of us on the exec team sits at that table, we all pull these out, we talk through those. So you're gonna hear Mary talking about, right, educator identity work and pretty sure Lily talk about um students as partners and leaders and Dan's gonna be talking about safe and healthy buildings. And Bob is gonna be talking about our adult support, right? This is what we do collectively and we get there because all of the voices, all of our budget developers, two of which worked here today, hopefully all the staff that they've connected with that percolates up to us, it goes to you as the board, it happens and flows back and forth. We get community input on this and then we develop our budget in that manner. And so these are moving there. Although they look like boxes, they're always coming up and we're analyzing them seeing what we're doing and how we can do the better and stronger. And maybe even with the current resources we have without increasing actually the dollar amount, but being smarter about the resources that we use.
So question, would we always have those nine boxes?
I, I mean, we can, we can always modify those nine boxes, right? But the board really, because you are sort of representatives of the community, that's almost our challenge to you as executive team members to say, is this accurate? Is this what the community is telling us, right? It's still valuable to them. These are still our priorities. So Karen, to answer your point, they're they're here now, but they could absolutely be modified if we find that our priorities have shifted.
So then where would we include like the um, I guess, safe and healthy buildings would be the Fall Creek Playground?
Absolutely.
Like the EV buses?
Yeah.
Sustainability, where would that be?
Right, so I I would say that's how, safe and healthy buildings that impact our environment. But I know that there are students who are asking us to add additional box grounds, sustainability goals.
Or we just do slash environment.
We are, we are moving to modify, so I love that feedback and I'm happy to do that and and include that on there. I think that would go, I think that represents the 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 voice of of our community for sure. So we'll make a note of that. Um, so just today, and this is not, this is not any um actual numbers in any way, but I just wanna give you, we can call these budget drivers, we can call these expenditure increases, right? We can, we can call these, because we turn the calendar, we know they have to happen, right? Um, and we also know about inflation rates we're all living in. Uh, salary, I right now, just rough estimations, just to go for our contractually obligated salary increases. Uh, we're gonna probably, it looks like about two point six million, just to go from one year to the next based on our bargain agreements of our salary increases from one year to the next, and that's just base salaries, right? Longevity is, we have to look at those, any other benefits, MOAs, things like that. So two point six is sort of like right the about the zone that that we're looking at. So remember, right, we're tracking that, I have the state aid increase and the tax increase. Two point six million will be increased for that. Retirement and benefits, including health insurance, health insurance, we're not there yet. Emily and I are not there um in terms of meeting with Christina and the work with the retirees. We're really trying to estimate what that's gonna mean for us. But right now, just retirement, New York State retirement systems, CRS and PRS and FICA. Um, you know, I'm estimating probably another maybe about six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, just to go from one year to the next. Um, and again, we don't know yet those set retirement rates, so that could go up. Um, although I know that they've been really smart about their investments, but investment, as if you've watched investments, those have been having a plumb too. So we have, we're waiting to see what those uh percentages are, so please don't hold me to that. BOSI's, they'll be presenting soon. It's unknown at that time. We're actually live time right now. Going into our final service request with BOSI's and we don't know our admin um request for increase from BOSI's. Typically each year, that's about a six percent increase, we send them one year to the next. So um I think last year, BOSI's budget was about thirteen or fourteen million. Um, so you know, that that goes up. Percentage increase, debt service I already spoke to, we know that we're gonna need a a little bit over a million dollars more because we're doing capital projects and we're securing debt for that um either through uh bands or bonds. Katie, Mary and I met with Sydney um and and shared our cookie with Lily. It's data thinking, but we're thinking we we probably, if we didn't do some changes, it's probably about five hundred thousand dollar increase. But we think that there are efficiencies and and things that we can evaluate that actually maybe will be as 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 much. But remember, we added sort of those boxes at the prior slide, right around um our learning forward and that's gonna take funding. Um, building maintenance, you heard from Heather, and of course, uh, that is related to debt service and other other projects. But you know, right now, Heather, I think, is tracking, like we said, at about two hundred and thirty and then the staff. And then the staffing, that's probably gonna go up. I would say it's close to the three hundred thousand. And then that like. So.
Can I just make a comment about BOSI's before, uh, you move on from these nine?
Go for it.
Um, this year, Jeff reminded us that we might experience sticker shock when we see their administrative budget line. Because as you recall, they borrow, uh, the money upfront, pay their people, and then as we pay them, they, uh, pay the loaners back and because interest rates have risen, um, I told them to bring their, their, uh, best worn-out shoes when they make this presentation, just a heads up. It's not gonna be the same incremental increases we've been used to. That's all. Thanks.
Oh, good. I am so glad you told me that. This is really, it was a wonderful month for finance committee.
And they also, um, have proved they're looking for space to bring back their construction, um, training program as well.
Great, good. All right. And remember, BOSI's is equitable, not always dollar for dollar, not every program. It's not all the full cost content, it's just a certain threshold on things. So this is great. We will, we will break down that BOSI's budget for you deeper, uh, once we, once we get those final service requests and those presentations in. So thanks, E, for that. I appreciate it. Um, okay, transportation services, we know gasoline, all, that's all building up, right? So I think, I said about a seven percent increase, I think for more, in, in, in transportation and all.
Oh, it is P.
Yeah, so, oh, Liz presented already, so I apologize, I should have had her number, but she presented last month and said we can get that for you as well. Inclusion practices, right, um, ensuring that, that we have staff, we have TA to make. That one, we always build, um, monies into that budget because then driven by I D Ps and five oh fours, and those meetings don't happen until oftentimes the end of school year. And so we want to make sure that we have the funding available to meet the needs of those kids. So you will see the capacity to meet those needs built into that budget. And then finding social and emotional well-being, um, and so Mary and I, that's a little bit part of the PD. And we're analyzing that, so we, we will be coming to you with those numbers as well. So that's just a few of the driver. You know, the budget is multiple pages long. And then finally, you know, obviously we are in it. And so, um, we're analyzing, we're connecting, we're collaborating, we're looking at, um, you know, what rolls forward. Sydney is meeting closed doors with Harry Unit in our office who does position control. Emily is estimating all the revenues, looking at the benefits lines. We have back-to-back budget meeting, March first, second and third, Mary and Lily, Sydney, myself, uh, Glazira are together to meet with every budget developer on staffing. And they are literally, we start at eight AM and we go to five thirty and we are just rolling all of our principals, directors through to make sure we have correct information and make sure that we're answering their needs. And so the staffing is the biggest driver. Our people drive this budget. And I don't mean the ones that are on cable. It is the kids, right? This is the budget about kids. And so we'll keep bringing information to you as we go. And, uh, and I apologize, I went a little bit late, but, um, these are, thank you, because we didn't have our Tuesday meeting, so I really appreciate the time to talk about the budget tonight.
Thank you. Good?
Yeah.
I could have.
And there's a big five. Five, actually, now, you know, the twenty twenty-four, it'll look like that.
All right.
Consideration of capital, I think that's the word, right?
Good.
Thank you. And we're good.
Um, just looking at the consideration of accounts, several, uh, I P I, uh, budget revenue money moving, um, we also have surplus vehicles and equipment and materials. Um, we've got the November, December, uh, food service, income and expense report, got a lot. Uh, anything that we want to highlight now, we are, because there are certain things just coincides with a hefty one.
Do you wanna, yeah, I, you wanna talk about, I, I, yeah, I don't want. Yeah, um, we have a bunch of I P E I little grants that have come through. Steve Manley has been through the office a bunch of times in the last couple days, um, just wrapping up checks and, and that, um.
Break my heart.
So we've got, we've got some new ones. You can see there, those are like the whole dollar amounts. There's one for six twenty-five and seventeen fifty, seven fifty. And then there's an odd amount that's six thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. And what we have found is that there were some I P E I grants that we received during COVID that were never fully spent. So we touched base with the teachers and the people who had written for the grants just to say, are you gonna spend this? Because if you're not, then we're gonna return the funds. Um, so there were many people who said, no, no, we are gonna get to it. So if you look at the detail on that, um, six thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars, you can see that we're re-appropriating money that can, you know, is, is going to be spent before year end. Um, and that's just odd dollars and cents that were left over on those grants. Um, we've got a couple, um, appropriation of larger grants, the six eleven grant, the IDA six eleven and the IDA six nineteen. Those are our special ed grants and that's pretty significant dollars. Um, I've got a small one in there for Title III, um, that I've got others to come to. So sorry for the barrage on this one. Um, there were a couple park grants, those, those were pretty significant funds, forty-two thousand and seventy-five hundred. Um, you know, the seventy-five hundred is for an LACS, um, trip, it funds a trip to Washington DC where the students are going to be doing some, um, facing history work, which is really.
Very cool.
It's the, oh gosh, the student rep shared the information at the last board meeting. And yeah, there, it's, um, basically a group of them getting to get, not a group, but they're representing LACS in DC um, for pacing history.
That's awesome. And then, um, I've got a couple other things in there. We've got the approval of the corrective action plans for.
For the schools from the, um, audit, yes.
Yep, um, so there are, there are, we're no comments on the general, on the, the main audit, which is lovely, you know? Um, Kudos, I always, and Emily, this is a great job getting that all set and Angela. Um, and then there are the corrective action plans from the four schools. It's LACS, the two middle schools, and the high school for their extra class funds. Um, and we, we're gonna do an internal, yeah, to be good. Yeah, we're doing, we're, we're currently in the middle of an internal audit on our extra class funds. Um, and that's ongoing. We'll, we'll have a meeting in May with the internal auditor to go through that. But I really, um, had great interactions with the central treasurers as we went through their corrective action plans and the principals, and there's a lot of support there for the extra class funds and for ensuring that we are being good fiscal stewards with that money. So I think that was, that was really good. You know, let me know if you guys saw anything in there that you wanted to just answer about. Um, and there's a resolution for disposal of some property, um, in athletics and also at the, in transportation. And then just a treasurer statement and, um, service. I know there's a lot. Let me know if anything stands out to you.
If something pops up.
Yeah.
After the meeting or in a week.
I, I can tell you it's a lot of information because I've read through it through. Okay, no, it's great though. Thank you all. Um, so since it's getting very close to eight o'clock, I'm gonna say the end. Don't be sorry, don't, please. Thanks to all of you. I know it's long days for all of you as well.
And next, I'll be, um, technology, special ed and BOSI's. So I might, um, depending on what we have, yeah, that's a lot. And also like, so what I might do is like, hopefully have a draft expenditure look, you know, for March, so then that way, if there are maybe your questions, we can go through them that way versus like a presentation.
Gotcha. Right? Everyone have a great year.
Thank you.
Later, folks.